We are firmly without a full board. We do not have a quorum. Do you speak up?
Yes. Yes, all right. The meeting is called to order, however, we do not have a quorum to initiate any business today. I will entertain public comment only. If you've signed up, where is that list, man? If you've signed up on the list, you can address the board three minutes and we'll have the next person. So again, there will be no decisions made today on the land use code. This will be for public comment only. First one will be on the list is Tim Leggett. Mr. Leggett, if you would.
Hi, everybody. My name is Tim Leggett. I just wanted to come in here today and just tell the commission and everyone that I support the changes to the land use code. And the reason that I support them is basically is I think that if we make the changes that it'll help us to have a better community. I think it'll help us to protect people who are already here with property rights. My issue is mainly not so much about people that are already existing in different areas of the county. My issue is right around my property, the people that are coming in and violating the land use code and the deed covenants. It's as if they don't even exist. And they do exist because they're there to protect people's rights and protect people from violating and harming each other from a property value standpoint. It also has to do with the aesthetic of the place. We're in the best part of the country. This is the most seen part of the country, yet we seem to be peppering the area with shacks. And I don't think that that's really the appropriate thing to do. I think that it kind of takes away from why we come out here in the first place and why we're choosing to live out here in the first place. And also, I'm really concerned about all of the problems that are starting to come about in the county as a result of the influx of people that are coming in with their children. And I'm worried about the welfare of the children that are coming in here. They're living in squalid conditions. I've heard some of the people from the school, child protective services, social services, and the sheriff's department talking about the situations they're coming across and having to deal with and the cost and impact which county. It's affecting their budgets. And that's really what my concern is about. If we can basically deal with some of these things and put some rules and some parameters around this, we'll have a better community for everybody to live in and it will reduce some of the problems that are going on with the law enforcement and the child protective services and the social services. That's really basically all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leggett. Next on the list is Denny Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm Penny Taylor.
Penny, I'm sorry.
I live Cattie Corner from Mr. Leggett. I've been in the city for the last four years for Mr. Leggett. I have had all my permits. I am a landowner. I have two neighbors. I have a child. I've been turned in by Mr. Tim and Diana Leggett to child protective services. I've been turned in to county services, to zoning, Matt Valdez. Colleagues come out several times. I was harassed. I've been stalked. I've been, had a camera on me 24/7. I mean, to the point they know, like, he wrote Mrs., is it Burns, on that commission?
Lewis Burns, the chair.
Yeah, there's an email from Mr. Leggett that I have and several others on the commissioner board where he's from Houston because he only came up like four times a year. And he was a vacationer. He wasn't here to stay, you know, to, he was just a vacationer. But he's the one that has started this. This is not Houston. This is San Luis Valley. This is Castillo County. We all want to improve this. Castillo County hasn't had any problems with all the money that's coming in. If you look around, you can count permits. Anywhere is from $250 up to $500, sir. And several of them have got them a couple of times. I have been ruled by a district court judge and then overruled by a county court judge, which is illegal. I have had my rights taken away. I have had the county come on my property illegally. They did not have a warrant and they took pictures through my privacy fence that held all my belongings. I've had Mr. Leggett come on my property. The sheriff wouldn't come and help me. I want this to be a better community for everyone. That's why I moved here. I have a teenage daughter who just graduated high school. You can talk to Mr. Edgar. You can talk to several others at the school. As for some things that have come up, we didn't have problems with the antelope being gone or the deer gone or the rabbits being gone until Mr. Leggett came up full time and started boiling up his shotgun and, I mean, pointing it at my daughter. He pointed rifle at me with a laser in the middle of the night. We had harassment.
That is not true. This is a trial. All right. Mrs. Taylor, thank you.
Several others have had the same type of thing happen to them.
Mrs. Taylor, thank you. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Next on the list is Juanita MacArthur.
She just stepped out.
She just stepped out.
Can we come back to her later?
Sure. I mean, you don't have a Miller up, so you ought to be able to come back to somebody who did you.
Next on the list is Nick. I cannot make out the last name.
I thought that was the sign sheet. I didn't know it was a speed line.
Oh, okay. A Grace Nielsen.
That would be me.
All righty, please. Three minutes.
I bought five acres out here. I moved out here because I wanted to live off grid with my four kids. And my kids are clean. They are well taken care of. There is not a problem with CPS coming around and jumping on me. We come out here, we buy our permits, we do what we're told to do, and I see no reason why it should be made harder on anyone. If my son becomes an adult and decides he wants to build a house on my five acres, he should be allowed to build a house on my five acres. I own it. There's no reason that my kids can't stay there, living on my property where they're already at. The code changes are absurd. There's just no reason for it. Everybody here came out here to get away from all the things. We came out here to live our lives. That's, I don't have a whole lot to say. That's all I've got to say. I'm here to live my life. I don't, I don't need a government to make that.
Next on the list is Daryl Newberry.
It'd be me.
All right.
I lived out here with my wife, my son. We picked up the land. We came out here basically to say, I think the rest of you did, to get out of some of these people that want to keep their thumbnail on you, keep you under their pressure. We all stopped what we were doing today to come here to make sure we voiced our opinion on this. And here we've gathered up. You didn't give all your ducks in a row, yes, I guess, so we're not going to be able to do anything other than talk about how bad it seems to be. I think the main problem is, is not necessarily all of this changes and stuff you want to do. Enforce what you've already got. Go out and take your, right? Same thing our government in Washington is doing is what you're doing here. It's how far can we stretch out and try to start grappling in this money? Everybody's making money. Colorado's a big state now. You know, we didn't move here for that. Some of us have medical conditions that moved here for that. And you're taking away from us on that. You keep seeing how much you can take away and take away rather than how you can try to help out the community and let us grow and let us expand and let us start saying, hey, we know this is where we're going to the Walmart out here. Please let us voice our opinion among our friends and try to, at least, come up with a consensus of what's best for us instead of you determining what you're going to do for us. That's what we're here for. So talk about how good we can make it here instead of what you're going to do with the new laws and all that. I'm not all from real with that because we didn't get any kind of an invitation. Had been for word of mouth, I wouldn't have known anything about it. I think that's kind of my. I'm sure there's going to be more to come up, but right now, if all this is is a talk and shoots at crap with your friends and neighbors about how bad it is, then I'm going to let somebody else take care of it. I hope to find out when you get all of your people together and we can start coming up with a solution to make this better, we're all invited back again because you've got our names on the list, so. That's all. I appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Is he on the list?
Are you on the list, man?
Oh, yeah.
Speak.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Is Juanita back?
No. Is she out here?
No, you're the last male.
Oh, okay. Oh, you're going down there?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry.
Can I put my name on that, please? I appreciate the applause. It's a little noisy in here. If you want, just keep it all low key, please. A, we have Daryl and we have Francis Newberry also.
That's me.
All righty. Go right ahead.
Yeah, I disagree with this Mr. Leggett. I know this is not a trial and jury, but I also moved down here. I have medical conditions. I want away from the rat race. I bought the five acres. It's mine to do what I choose to do with, and I don't think anybody has the right to tell me otherwise. If somebody buys the five acres next to me and they want to pitch a tent, that's fine with me. I don't care. It's their property. They should be able to do with what they want to do. If this was a subdivision, like where I used to live, there was million dollar homes. I have came from this. I have lived like that, and I won't do it again because I don't like who I live by. I like who I live by so far. Everybody that I've met out there is genuine and they're true. They don't spill you full a bunch of crap. And I don't, I don't want anybody coming next to me and telling me that I live in squalor because you know what? Not everybody has the same amount of money. And as long as they're abiding by God and they do the right thing and they get their permits and they keep their kids clean, then that's fine with me. You have no right to come in there and try to tell people otherwise.
Mrs., we don't need to be picking on the big hitter. It's not part of what the discussion is. It's your comments. It's your comments.
Well, that's what my comment is. I don't care what this means to me. And that seems to be the problem. And I have all my permits. I have done everything that I'm supposed to do. And I think everybody in here has been trying to do that. And I don't want anybody coming in there and saying that I'm only allowed two permits and that I can't come in there and do what I want to do. I'm just trying to live my life free and do as I want to do and not have anybody harassing me. I don't break the law. I don't do anything against the law, so therefore I don't think anybody should tell me what to do. It's my land.
Next on the list is Paul Skinner.
Thank you for your time, gentlemen. I just wanted to let everybody know that I've been a resident of the valley here for 20 years over in Rio Grande Ranches. I know, I recognize some of my neighbors and it's wonderful to see you here because this is what we call community, sir. Okay? We're not just a bunch of yuhas and yahoos that want to move out there and grow the marijuana and all that stuff. We are residents that have come to live off the grid, off the land. It is our land. It is our property. One of the things I think that your organization should do is address the owners that are selling their lots for like $100 down and $75 a month because there's a lot of people that are like that. And it's the owner, original owners, that should be taking care of these permits for these people that are buying their land or at least let them know what they're supposed to do. The code enforcement people I've dealt with on other issues near me about certain property, if Ben Doom was here, I could have him address the issue because I deal with him. He's the liaison that I've been using. Nothing's been done in the two years that I've been trying to get the zoning permits required and the septic permits required for this particular landowner near me. That's another issue. Discouraging, to say the least, is you're discouraging development with excessive fees for permits or disallowing camping, composting toilets, pot containers. I mean, where did you come up with this number of 600 square feet as a minimum for house, you know? I mean, we should all be able to do what we want to do on our property. Again, I've been out here 20 years and I've seen it grow. There's a lot of looky-loos that come out in camp trailers and RVs just to see what dad and gramps had left them. A lot of them don't make it because of the winters. In the harsh economic times, some of these people have nowhere else to go, and I've seen that happen. In my area alone of Rio Grande Ranches between H and May Roads, I interpret or intercept these people and say, hi, how you doing? I'm Paul. I live up on the hill. Where are you coming from? You got a plot map? Make sure they get on the right lot because it happens. There's some people out near me that are on the wrong lot and they don't even know it, but they're making all this trash and this mess. So I have to get a hold of the landowners that own it and have them deal with this thing. These people aren't doing anything about it. Other issues I have is, like I said, land is cheap. Most of it's been bought and sold, bought and sold over the years. So, you know, it's hard to tell who owns it outright.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. The next on the list is Jensen. I cannot make out the first names.
Hiram.
Hiram.
I'm not going to stand up. I have a bad leg. I'm a disabled veteran. I just got out of the service at the end of 2013. I came out here because I have a hard time being in large groups of people. I have a hard time being in cities and I can't deal with traffic. So I came out here to get away and live off grid. I've always dreamed of living off grid and I actually have lived off grid for many years in a place called Afghanistan. So I'm familiar with how to do it, how to handle the situation, how to handle septic, all of that. Rather than changing the permits and requiring plot maps and gradient maps and architectural designs and requiring all of us to pay for surveyors to come out and redo all of, like, do all of our land use development, like land use permit applications and all of that, why don't we work with the laws that we have and deal with the problems that we have rather than creating more problems by changing the land use code to involve and include more problems?
What is this? Yeah, what is this?
Agreed. That's right. We came through that one, she just stepped out of the way. That is weird. Y'all haven't even just ordered.
On her cellphone.
There's a legal question about the filming.
Of course, if we're consulting public.
I bet you're concerned about the filming. I bet. You just had a vet speak out. You better get on the horn.
I say you wait, wait to finish before you start.
I'm ready for one of them.
If we have a problem with sewage disposal, we handle that problem with sewage disposal. If we have a problem with children showing up unshowered to work as, or to school, from my understanding, the schools, a lot of them use the showers, the schools. And in addition to that, we can teach, you know, field hygiene courses. We can help the families that are having those problems rather than disallowing all of us from being here in this valley, in this county.
I'm Michael.
Michael Morse.
That's me. How's everybody? I am not a landowner.
Okay. I'm sorry, Michael, to interrupt. I just want to respond to him telling me to turn the camera off. Can you physically show me the law? This is a public building. I do all respect.
He just consulted with our attorney. He said audio's fine. Video's not allowed.
Okay. All right. We'll find out. We'll find out what the legalities are.
Okay. I'm not a landowner. I'm here to live off grid sustainably. I am an advocate for sustainability on a planet where everybody just wants to run around like retards and do a bunch of stuff they have no right to do. The fact is, people are missing the point. We are sovereign citizens of the earth. Our rights are granted to us not by the constitution, not by our forefathers, not by soldiers overseas. Our rights were granted to us by our creator, whatever that is. And our rights are being infringed because our property is under attack. And people whose property can be dictated to them are known as slaves. And I've been done with that for a long time. So the point, I, my thing is very easy. You guys don't have the authority to do what you're doing. You think you have the authority to do what you're doing because you follow the biggest religion on earth known as authority, man's authority, to dictate things that are not valid in nature. I don't have, I can build whatever I want on my land if I, if I own my land. These people can build whatever they want on their land. It's their property. It's their land. Not only is what you guys doing wrong, it's immoral. It's illegal. It's unconstitutional. It's un-American. You know what I'm saying? Like, you paid your land. You paid for your land. You struggled. You did things. You sacrificed time with your kids to go to work and get money and pay for things. And when you got there, you reached a pinnacle, a certain point that we all talk about in America called the American dream. You bought the American dream and now somebody wants to tax you for it. Somebody wants to dictate. We don't live, unfortunately, we don't live in a dictatorship. This isn't Cuba. So we don't, nobody can dictate this. You guys are making up rights that you don't have. In this country, in this world, we're supposed to have equal rights. And I've been, I may not be a landowner, but I've been doing enough research on this to know that that's what you essentially are doing. You are creating a right that you don't have, which means you're saying you are masters. I don't have a master. Now, he can't tell me what to do with my land. He can't tell her what to do with her land. Therefore, you can't either. You have an imagination that you can, and that's what man has had for a long time. There was never a such, a valid thing as slavery. It was a claim that somebody made and then other people rode with that claim. You guys are claiming that a house has to be 600 square feet or 120 square feet. And then the worst part about it is, just like good old American standard, you never want to educate people about the law. You just want to make it up and find them when they don't know. Ignorance of the law is not an excuse. Yeah, it is. Because we're standing here, we came out here, we're showing you, and my friend has a lot more hope than I do. I told him just like this, authority doesn't care what you're going to say because that's not the point. If I'm coming to rob you, I don't care what you're going to say about it. That's what you guys are doing. You're robbing us. You robbed us from our, we, we supply, when the water gets bought, we buy it. When the wood gets bought, we buy it. When the propane gets bought, we buy it. And the more people that come out here doing that are contributing. That's what's called a contributing member of society. And we're being attacked. Now, this man over here or whoever wants to bring, it's hubbub. You guys don't have a right. That's all I'm going to say. You guys don't have a right to do what you're doing. It's illegal. It's unconstitutional. Un-American.
Yeah, it's not like to say, I bought a piece of property out here and became a landowner. I really liked the valley. I think it's beautiful. No trees, but it's kind of different, you know? But, you know, I didn't buy the valley, buy the piece of property to become a slave or to become in a prison, shall we say. You know, in three weeks after I buy the land, you change the rules on me, you know? I wouldn't have bought the land if the rules had been changed three weeks prior. I wouldn't have owned it. I would have went somewhere else. You know, I'm a builder by trade. I keep America rolling. That's what I do, you know? But, you know, either way, I'm very upset about being able to not, all the new rules come up. I'm very upset about it. You know, I wouldn't have bought the land otherwise. I wouldn't have done it. Just plain and simple. But I did buy the land and I'm a landowner now and I'm standing for my rights and I don't want to be a slave on my land. I don't want to, I don't want to be in a jail on my own land, you know? And that's what y'all are putting me in, a jail on my own land. And I'm not liking it at all, you know? I'm very upset, very upset, and I'm here to do something about it. That's all I got to say.
Is it Clark's or Charles?
Dan Nekim Charles?
Yes.
All right, sir. I'm just here to say I'm a disabled veteran as well. I came here, I bought the land mostly to be left in peace. I'm just camping on it right now. But I have a mother who might be coming to visit me soon. She's a disabled veteran as well. I don't know if any of you may have had the same dreams, but I hope one day I can build a house that my mother will never have to pay rent again. And that's all. I just came here like everyone else. I'm sure we just want to be left alone. I don't mean to break any laws. I don't mean to harm my neighbors. If anything, I help my neighbors whenever possible, whenever they call me. I don't mean to disrupt the land. I clean my land. I clean random things I see around just because I like the valley. I like it here and I want to make it my new home. That's all I have to say.
Next is Chloe Everwood.
That's me. And one thing I wanted to address that I haven't heard yet is the human rights consequences of the proposed changes. I understand that the county has a lot of problems. This is the poorest county in Colorado. I've been involved with Cane House County Clean Water and have seen the illegal dump sites. And there's like carcasses next to the creek. It's really gross. And there's a lot of poverty here. But I think that going about solving the problems this way is going to actually create a whole lot of unintended ones. And you're talking about children coming to school in squalor, but what's going to happen to those kids who are living in an RV with parents who love them if those parents go to jail over a nuisance violation? Or if those kids whose parents have worked really hard to cut wood, gather materials, buy supplies, are forced to leave right before winter? I mean, what's going to happen to them? It's not like they're going to move into a house. They'll be like under a bridge in Denver or something. There's a lot of people who really aren't well off here. And what I want to say is that I think it'd be a whole lot better if we tried to build community. There's a lot of us out here who want to do that and who are getting to know our neighbors and who are getting involved with a lot of the nonprofits, the local food coalition, the environmental groups, and who are trying to make those things even stronger. And if you cause a lot of problems by, well, I guess pricing most of us out of here, if you make us move from our land, what's going to happen is, Hiram and I have been sleeping in an RV for a year. We had to move into it after we were about to lose our apartment. We looked at our finances and realized we had about five months left until homelessness if we didn't do something proactive. So we moved into an RV. And we've been in it for the last year. And if you guys kick us off our land because you don't like the way our RV looks that we're sleeping in while we're building a house, trying to make a better life for ourselves, that's going to cost us gas money getting back and forth. That's going to cost us $400 or $500 a month for an RV park for the privilege of sleeping in the very same RV that we're in anyways. It's going to hurt us. It's going to hurt a lot of people. It's going to hurt kids and you're going to see a lot of unintended consequences for this. And I'd just like to say that I think there are a lot better ways of addressing those problems. And I also don't think that we should all be bound by anybody's aesthetics. We all have a different idea of what is beautiful. And if you don't like the shack that your neighbor's built, move somewhere else. It's their right to live there. So that's what I wanted to say. We should all be in this together.
Thanks, Chloe.
Next on the list is Vince Edwards.
All right, I got a quick story here. Okay, so say your town council gets together and, you know, the county has had really Um, okay, so say your town council gets together, and, you know, the county has had really bad crops for like ten years in a row, you know, and maybe some of the people on your town council, they're a little strange, you know, and they maybe are into some witchcraft or some kind of crazy stuff, you know, and they, they read somewhere, you know, if we like vote, if we like have a child sacrifice on May first, okay, we're gonna have good crops this year, okay? Now, basically, you know, for some reason, all these other crazy people are talked into this, and then the town council votes, okay? So, then the town council has now voted to take the firstborn child, whoever that is, okay, it's just basically, you know, uh, you know, and, and they're gonna get sacrificed, so that the rest of the community can have good crops this year, okay? Now, obviously, obviously, that's unlawful, obviously, that's unconstitutional. And as far as I'm concerned, it's these folks' job to arrest you if you are trying to vote on something like that, okay? And that's something that's gonna, my rights pre-existed the constitution, okay? Um, and most here just want to be left alone. And as I understand it, my, my rights can't be voted away, okay? Um, we do not live in a democracy, we live in a republic, okay, which is rights guaranteed by the, by the constitution, guaranteed by the constitution, not granted to us by the constitution. So, we have these rights, and a right is something that you can exercise without permission. I do not have to ask anyone permission to exercise my rights. On almost every single warranty deed you look up, you'll find the words "fee simple." That's a little bit of legalese, if you go to Black Thought Dictionary and look that up, you're gonna find out you have absolute unconditional use of your property. That's not just your feelings, folks, that's actually the law. Uh, I am in the process of filing criminal complaint against everybody who has trespassed on my property illegally without a warrant. The fact is, you can't come on my property without a warrant, I don't care what your excuse is. Um, commercial, residential, these terms need to explain for the folks here. Uh, folks, they want to make you think that if you're a resident, then you can be regulated, okay? And basically, they can regulate commercial activity. Now, the constitution grants government the reg, the authority to regulate commercial activity, okay? They do not grant government the authority to regulate private activity. Now, residential is not private activity, if you go and look up the word resident, you're gonna find out you live in DC. Okay, so basically, they're regulating people who are posing as federal agents, okay? Uh, if you're a US citizen, you're a government agent, you're the lowest one on the totem pole, okay? And as far as, I agree with everything you said, everything you say, except one correction. You can't be a sovereign and a citizen. A citizen, a citizen is, is a subject, and a sovereign is one of the people in America, folks, okay? We're all, all of us are sovereigns, okay? I'm not claiming to be the king.
Uh, John Hay.
One of my concerns would be, if we can't stay in our RVs while we build a house, then any of the tools that we leave out there are gonna get stolen. I've already had a motorbike stolen, a lot of my tools stolen, and I was gone for a few hours. If we can't protect our property while we're developing the property, then that, to me, seems like there's gonna be a lot more issues. When I bought my land, I came out, I talked to Matt, we had a great conversation about super adobe houses, I wanted to build a house using an alternative method. And it was, it's sound, it's been used in California for years. But in order to do it, I have to do it myself, there aren't contractors that understand the process, it is... The thing is, here in Costilla County, we have a wonderful opportunity to explore and experiment with some of these alternative building styles, which could really help the environment. It could really revolutionize the economy, and to completely shut those things down would be a tragedy, an injustice, and it would be bad for the local economy. So, that's, you know, concerns me, I talked to Matt yesterday on the phone, we had a good conversation. He said, as long as we have a building permit for a residence, or we have an established residence, then we can have our RV on our land, because I mean, I want to keep my RV after I build the house. Um, but I don't see that in the code reflected anywhere, it doesn't actually say what Matt told me in the code. So, maybe if you guys could revise that to be more clear. If you do want people with residences or a residential permit to still be able to be in their RV, then the code should be updated to reflect that, because that maybe is just a misunderstanding. A lot of the things in the code can be handled amongst us as a community, I use AutoCAD, I can write those diagrams. I submitted mine to the zoning commission, or whatever, and it was, they were great, they liked my drawings, they were to scale, they were proper. So, maybe some of us in this room can help each other solve some of these problems without there being turmoil. Uh, the last thing I'd like to address is that many of us think we own our land, but we really don't, we just have warranty deeds. And the warranty deed is color of title, it's not true title. The true title comes from land patents. And a loyaltal title comes from land patents, and then understanding constitutional law and common law, which is different than the law you guys are choosing to represent, they're different laws. Common law is treaty law, is, supersedes the laws you guys are trying to impose. Although, that's a slippery slope, many of us probably don't want to spend twenty years in federal court fighting it. I'd like to imagine that there's a happy medium between our ideals and the ideals of the people that want to see, you know, a clean community, there has to be a happy medium, and together, we could probably figure that out, that's it.
Sorry, General Carter?
Right. I'm also a disabled veteran, a hundred percent disabled, I've been twice wounded in combat defending my rights. I did not defend those rights to come back and have some county commission take them away from me. Attended to those rights is property rights. Property rights are among the natural laws of man. The natural rights of man is seen by our forefathers, as they tried to enumerate within the constitution. Central to that are property rights, without property rights, you have no other rights, because they are the cornerstone. You have a listing here that shows your authority under the constitution of the state of Colorado. I'll be doing some research, then I'll be looking at court cases and everything else. Because the constitution of the state of Colorado was subjected to the supreme law of this land, the constitution of the United States. The constitution of the United States is not designed so that we can have a feudalistic system where one person rules over his neighbors. Thank you.
Is it Michael, Jim? James?
Nissas?
Yes, alright.
First of all, I'd like to make a formal complaint against Colleen Romero and Chris DeSoto. They entered my land without a court order, without a warrant, without a warrant, without any crime being committed. It's a violation of my Fourth Amendment constitutional rights. I called the state's attorney, they're aware. Secondly, I also sell land out in the Rio Grande ranches. They've run multiple people I've sold land to off their land, trying to enforce regulations that aren't legally binding yet. I don't appreciate moving to Colorado from Massachusetts, a state that's known for government corruption and getting right back into the same situation. And lastly, if I peacefully resist any of these changes if they pass, how much force is the county willing to use to take me off my land?
That's a good question.
Are they willing to kill me? Are you gonna kill me for peacefully not leaving land I own?
Are we gonna be kidnapped?
But we've had people on land holding their guns while they walked up to us for absolutely no reason.
Will you, will you be handcuffed and detained with, without any reason why?
Yeah.
What, what is it, what is it gonna come to, what is the crime that you will take it in for?
We're trying to take a peaceful route, as long as you guys are, we, you guys are, we'll take care of the rest.
Gentlemen, who? This gentleman is talking right here.
I don't mind, everyone.
You don't have a floor.
If I peacefully resist, are they gonna kill me on my land?
We're done.
No, 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 he says he's not allowed to speak. Yeah.
The guy told me couldn't speak, and now he can't.
You don't know the constitutional law, you don't know the constitutional law, and that's what makes it wrong.
Let's make sure we all get a chance to speak.
What actions is the committee gonna take against these two violating my United States constitutional rights?
Well, if you don't comply, then you don't comply with the standards, and you get a warrant for arrest and they'll school you.
No, 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 I mean, the first time, you came out last Thursday, there was no court order, no warrant, and you were trying to enforce regulations that hadn't even been passed yet.
That's pathetic.
Yeah.
You heard it here first. You heard it here first, threats of arrest.
Regulations are under the uniform of the constitutional rights. You're forcing us into commerce with y'all, and that's illegal, that is what is against our constitutional rights.
Hold on, he's got fifty seconds left.
I'm done. I'll raise my hand, just because I gotta say something. Uh, Marbury versus Madison is, is a case that's been challenged in, in court over a hundred times. It's never been overturned, and all laws repugnant to the constitution are null and void on their face. At inception, not, not, not when you find out about it, the fact of the matter is, is I'm claiming that these are in violation of my rights. If somebody's claiming that I don't have a right to do so, something on my property, I want them to say so right now. Who's claiming that I don't have a right to do something on my property? Because that's something that I can chew on, okay?
Because you're not the landowner, your property, correct?
I, I, as far as my, my, as far as my, the financier said, I'm, I'm a legal owner, I just don't have access rights to the deeds yet. I don't know if I can do it more about this.
Next up, let's stick to the schedule, please, Alex.
Okay. Yeah, I, I, I'm sorry. I came out in November of two thousand twelve, and, you know, I did a lot of prayer to what I call God, even find a place where I could rest after years of living in this urban grid. And thanks to Ryan, who's in this room, I was able to actually have my own space and shelter and fall in love with this land, more than any other land I could fall in love with back in Oregon, where I'm from. Okay, so, no one's gonna stop me from living here. And I'm gonna document every single thing that's taking place, because I see there's no media here. And I have had people coming to me and telling me there's criminality going on within San Luis, and I'm being told stories, names, places, states, figures. Tell you what, if this gets really bad, I'm gonna dedicate full time to not looking at what the federal government's doing, but exposing what's happening here in Costilla County. Because what I'm hearing is, I'm hearing about harassment, I'm hearing constantly about Colleen, this person walking up on people's property with a hand on the gun, this is harassment, this is inhumane, I'm gonna give you a warning, it ain't coming from me. You want to start a civil war in Costilla County? You don't want to be going door to door, forcing people from their land, because I will peacefully at least help people organize. To the people in this room, we have a website. To the people in this room, we have a Facebook page. And we will take this as far as we can if they're actually trying to threaten us with their land by contacting media peacefully. We have to contact media, we have to let other people know that stand for what we stand for, that this is happening in Costilla County. They weren't expecting us to show up today, this is just the beginning. We're gonna hold the county commissioners responsible. I will personally, I'm acting as an individual, so nobody can be embarrassed for crazy Alex. I'm acting as an individual, I will expose as much as I can about the criminality within the county government. And there's been enough people coming and telling me about Tim and your history with pointing guns at people, it's very alarming. I'm hearing stories, and it looks like we're putting together a case.
This is not about my husband.
Apparently it is, I've done, I probably asked and peacefully asked that. The county reconsiders what it's doing, because ultimately, I see this as inhumane. I spent three thousand dollars for the RV that I live in, that I drove back from Portland. Okay, and no one's gonna tell me that Costilla County that I have promoted, including the law enforcement. People ask me all the time, what are the cops like there, I said, they're way better than the big city cops. I've said nothing but that for three years, that Costilla County cops are way better. Now, we take it back, and we have to warn people, including landowners that have land in Costilla County, there are people, men and women with guns, that will threaten you with arrest. It is against the constitution, and I will remind you of the Fourth Amendment of the US Constitution, I don't care who founded this land. We are in the United States, and we have a Fourth Amendment to the constitution, that we will be secure in our persons. I'm speaking as an individual, not for the group, but I will make Costilla County the thing that I will obsess on, expose, put on YouTube, and I've already talked to several websites, they're gonna run the story, if you guys are gonna move and push us out.
And I'll help them. You guys are a great institution, I just advise it highly.
You wanna see me?
I'm proud of everybody here. Proud to, proud to be in there today.
William Rossetti?
Uh, yes, that's my son, William Rossetti. What I want to do is, you guys are, we're talking about the right things here. The first thing I want to do is speak really to you folks primarily. And first is to thank you for being able to make this possible. Because every one of you, we should not, I, I'm not asking for rights, as we've discussed, right? I don't care what the constitution says, I care what my constitution says.
Yes.
What these people's constitution says, and ultimately, I sort of care what your constitution says, which is why I'm going to ask in some form for you to look at what you're doing, right? Morally, as we've suggested, right? Look into yourselves, and see if you think that it's right to kick this man off of his land, in his RV, he's paid for it. Right? What happens if we come to your home and kick you off your land? Right? Is that the moral thing to do? Is that what you think, you get paid to do this? You get paid to come on these people's lands and threaten them? You should quit your job, right now.
Yeah, amen.
Quit, if you don't like what you're doing, quit.
I worked law enforcement for seven years, and I quit. At some point, I got tired, I got diagnosed with PTSD. I quit.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, please, as a courtesy, everybody on the list is speaking, let them have their moment. Thank you.
One of the oldest things that has ever been said about government is by Confucius, who says, "You who govern public affairs, what need have you to employ punishments?" Right? Love virtue, and the people will be virtuous. But if you come on my land armed, asking me to leave, I will not be virtuous. Let it happen, see what happens. We're, we're, we're telling you what we are prepared to do, you're telling us what you're prepared to do. And let's see what happens in the fields. Right? Because I'm gonna go back and live in my land. If I see you there, let's see, let's see what happens. And I'm done.
I'll put this all over the seventh.
You should resign your office.
There'll be a lot more people knowing about this, the militias will know about it.
And I would say this, like I said, if I can do it, I worked law enforcement for seven years, diagnosed with PTSD and everything from it, I got shot at, I was the only female in my force, and at some point, when I felt that it was unlawful, when I saw certain things that was not right, eventually, I had to walk away, I had to walk away. I loved my job, I was making money off of it, I was helping my family, but I had to walk away.
Ma'am, thank you very much, we're going on to the next individual. She was, she was...
It's fine, I wasn't honest.
Robin?
That would be me.
Alright.
Hi, I've been here for about five years, and I can see the county's issues, why the county's upset with issues and things that are going on out there. I live out there, but I find that there's a big issue in Costilla, I mean, in, in, in this county, because what we've got is the old guard and the new folks. But this situation was set up by land developers and by the county itself, by allowing all those subdivisions. The other thing is, I have, I, I, there's a solution to this, there's solutions, and there are peaceful solutions. I've been thinking for a long time, I haven't had the, the energy, I'm disabled, or the, but I'm willing to help work on it, is a booklet for all of the newcomers to tell them what the resources are, what the resources are not, what they have to do to get what they need. Um, if, if we can work together as a community, then we don't have people, what, what people mostly come out there with is misinformation. The thing that scares me the most is people think there are no laws, so they come out and they start shooting up everybody, you know? Um, we, most of us, Paul, Tamara, a lot of us have been there a while, we end up being ambassadors out there, talking to lost people, trying to tell them what they can and can't do um, as far as, as, as laws go. I don't agree with the zoning laws, I think that, I just had a family reunion, and I had my kids and, 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 and my husband's family, and they were camping on my land. I don't want to be told that I can't have my family come visit me.
They're gonna throw you in jail.
Yeah, so, the other, we need, and, and the rules are equitable, these go against you too. Lots of the folks in this town own land out there. They go out there and they camp out there for Easter and have Easter egg hunts, that's illegal now? Or gonna be illegal, because they put a tent or a camp? You know, we're, we're cutting our own throats here, we need to work together. We need, and I would love to work with somebody on a booklet or something that hand out to new people when they come and get permits, to, to tell them what the, you know, to, to show them like where to get water, because there's a lot of water issues here, I know the farmers are upset about the little wells and stuff, where to go get water. Maceda loves to sell water, you know, just all, and, and where to go, and, and if you're freezing to death, about, you know, just stuff like where the homeless shelter is if you can't make it through the cold winter. And the kids, and the schooling, because I know that some of us have homeschool, and they have very good homeschooling, and others come out there and say they're homeschooling, and they're not doing anything, you know? And so, if we can get together and do an information system for everybody, then we've got a system where people don't have the battle to find out where they're going.
Matt?
I have a lot to say, we, we bought our land a few years ago, we've been out here a few times, we love it. We finally got everything tied up back home. And, with my family out here, we've got a nice piece of land out in the mountains, we love it, we love it here, it's amazing. But we're in an RV right now, I mean... I mean, we bought the land, there weren't restrictions on long-term camping permits and that kind of thing. And the, the regulations, they're trying to use your force to impose on people on their own five or six acres, we can't even see a neighbor from our land, you know? And, uh, you know, you impose these regulations, you're not gonna have anybody out here. You can't just expect somebody to come to a place with no job and, and build a mansion up on a hill, you know? You gotta start somewhere. And these people on their land, they, they're gonna try their best, they're not just coming out here to dump crap all over the land, you know? My neighbors, I, I've gone to visit a few of them. And they're taking good care of their land too, they're in, they're in campers and RVs, but they're, they're trying, they're working on it. And you're only gonna hurt things, you're not gonna make things better. Uh, and again, I'm a little annoyed that I couldn't find anything about this meeting anywhere, like, I didn't hear about it word of mouth. Is there any other set time for another meeting or something coming up?
Well, yes, he published in the local paper.
What's the local paper?
Pre-press.
Pre-press?
The little pre-press.
Ladies and, ladies and gentlemen, ladies...
People have rights.
Ladies and gentlemen, for your information, the Planning and Zoning Commission meets the second Wednesday of every month, ten AM, right here. No hidden issues, we're here once a month for, uh, to meet. So that is where your...
This is the second Wednesday of the month.
I'm sorry. Alrighty.
Is it Tuesday or Wednesday? Because today's Wednesday.
Uh, the Planning Commission is Wednesday, and the next meeting coming up that's important for us all to show up at is the County Commissioners' Meeting. That is going to be on Tuesday, the fifteenth, at ten AM, and it's going to be at three forty-two Main Street, which is, uh, where a couple of people showed up earlier before Neil railed him back here. So, that's the next big one.
Anybody that wants to stay has to have their name on the agenda ahead of time.
Correct.
Which you, no one ever tells them, Matt didn't tell me. I went over and they're like, we're not gonna talk to you. So I came back.
Who are you talking to? Do we care or?
Talk to me.
Uh, with the commissioner.
We don't have nothing to do with that, you have to talk to, you're...
It's one of the best things about government, man.
But you didn't tell me I needed to be on, Jim.
It's their fault.
Alright, next, next person, uh, Troy? If we could be, Troy, courtesy of listening to him, please?
Yeah, I'm Troy Zen, and, uh, most of these people are my neighbors. And I'm honored to have them as my neighbors. And, uh, they, most of them come out here to get away from the city life, the hustle and bustle, and the restrictions that come with living in the big city. And they come to a peaceful place because most of them wanna get off the grids and they don't give half their income to the utility companies. And I don't see a problem with it. I do not understand why they can't live in an RV on their own property, or even, well, they, why they should be charged to live in their RV on their own property. It does not make any sense to me at all. You can camp on the national forest or on the BLM without even being charged, except, with the exception of specified camping areas, and most of that is an honor system where you put a donation in the box when you go in. And, uh, to me, that does not make sense. Like the gentleman was saying, you know, if he's trying to build a home, build his property up, it's kinda hard for him to live fifty miles away in an RV park and pay all that money to live there and drive back and forth when somebody's packing his tools off every time he moves. And, uh, you know, it's just, I admit there's probably some issues that need to be addressed. I also agree with the gentleman, I believe there has to be a path immediately where people can come together peacefully and honorably and, and come to a, a mutual agreement without it costing someone thousands of dollars just to have the privilege to own a five-acre lot that they only paid three, two to five thousand dollar for. You know, there's no, the county, the state, no one is offering any services whatsoever on most of these properties. And that's what people are coming here for, is to get away from that and not have to pay all their money to the, to the county, state, and the federal government for utilities, electric bill and water and sewer and everything, and get off the grid. And I believe that it needs to be done properly and safely and, and sanitarily, but I don't see a problem, there's many, many options of living off-grid. But, uh, it are inactive use all over the United States, that's quite amazing. And also, a lot of these people buy this property...
Ladies and gentlemen, could we, could we turn it down so the gentleman can finish talking and the rest of us could hear?
Many of these people buy these properties to come out, I, I just... Well, I just wanna say real, real quick, they come out here just to camp for a weekend or two, and then they're going back to Denver to their jobs or whatever.
Thank you. The next one on the list is Thompson, I can't make out the first name.
Oh, alright. I'm Rick Thompson, I know Troy and Juanita and a bunch of the rest of y'all out there. My mama come out here and bought property thirty years ago. When she first came out here, I pulled a little trailer from California and parked it on her property. For the next ten years, my mama hauled water herself out there for household use and her little flowers. My daddy was in California, he worked out there, sent her money so that they could build a home on the property they bought. She died. Now, my dad, he lives out there enjoying that home that she built. These people that come out there and they buy that land, from some of these landowners that I know that own land out there that ain't worth a pig's ear, they ain't got nothing but what they show up with. You know? They got little kids, they got a dog, and they got maybe a tent or a motorhome or a trailer. Now, all of us that have lived out there twenty-five, thirty years have seen the winters here. And we know, we know that living in them tents and them trailers and such, if you make it through a winter out here in that, then you've got a chance of staying. Wintertime here is the hardest part of living in this state. You changing rules to make it harder on these people to come and buy that land and improve it and raise the taxes that you all collect is just crazy. It is, it's just crazy. Immoral. They came out, these county people here, I came in, talked to them, my house was built by Henry Ivanoff. Him and his mama moved out there forty years ago, forty-five. Some of y'all knew Henry, he drove school bus over there in the heart. Okay? I come over here and talk to these people, they didn't, according to county records, the house I bought and the property I bought, they didn't even know about it, and it had sat out there for thirty-five years. They came out and measured it, figured out that my house I live in now is worth a hundred and thirty thousand dollars, that's what this county says it's worth. They're crazy. It might be worth thirty, it might be worth thirty thousand dollars. I pay three hundred dollars a year in taxes on just my house. Okay? In the time I've been out here fifteen years, in that time...
Keep going. Thank you. Thank you.
Continue? In that time, I've seen the sheriff's department in my vicinity five times in fifteen years. I've seen the fire department out there once, no, that's not true, twice in fifteen years. You read your tax statement about all the taxes you pay and everything that is paid, my road I live on has not been graded, graded, or greater on it in a year. Okay? And I can prove that. And then they fuss and want to raise permit fees and tell you what you can't live in and what you can't, and I understand, because we had people move in just down the road from me that showed up from Texas, that showed up with a cab over camper, they dropped it on the ground, they went and got a couple of trailers that I wouldn't give you a plug nickel for and parked out there, but they were trying. You know what I mean? The problem is, is that when winter came, they couldn't make it. They loaded up in their little pickup from Texas and they left. And they left the mess. The landowner, and it's still there, it's been there for two years, just down the road from my house, I've complained to the landowner about it, it's still sitting there. I understand these people's problem with what we stay in out there, okay? But if it's self-contained motorhome and it's heated and you can manage to get through the winter out here in it, I don't see a problem at all.
I'd gladly let you hang up at my place.
Is it Brian?
Yes, it's Brian.
Oh, please.
Um, I live, I live on five acres with my mother, um, out there in, uh, the Prairie. And, uh, I find it wrong for any government official to change permit requirements, especially for those that are, you know, veterans of the US branch, of the US branch military, or even the police and fire department, because they're, they can be considered veterans as well, or even those that are disabled and have fixed income of less than eight hundred dollars a month, when that barely gets some of, some folks by the first two weeks of the, of the month. And I, I would, uh, strongly ask that if you're gonna change them, amend them to where it is, um, suits each individual based on their needs, on their financial requirements. And that's all I've got to say.
Thank you very much. Raymond K O Z I C?
Uh, that's, if you're saying Ramona?
Yeah, Ramona.
That's my mom, she, that's my mother.
Oh, okay.
And that's why I put it in print.
I got you, alright, okay.
Because I'm representing both of us here on this.
Alright, thank you. Jason Byer? Yes, yes.
Yeah, I just rolled into town today.
Welcome.
It's amazing to me, uh, God and my Savior Jesus Christ would bring me to something like this and open my eyes to what's going on here. I got rid of all my stuff, got my wife, my kids, I got five of them in the car, and we were gonna come out here and just try to make it. Broke as can be, nowhere to go, and my parents have land, they own here, and I was gonna try and build on it. I'm hearing everybody's stories and I'm like, wow, you know what I mean? Maybe this wasn't meant to be, but I got nowhere to go. I really don't.
Stay, make it work.
We won't try to impose things on you. So... I really, I'm not choosing sides on it either way, but, uh, anyway, we can make this work, I think that's gonna be the best way and, uh, for everybody, whatever everybody needs, because that's what community is, it's helping out each other. What everybody's needs are, everybody helping out each other, that's what community is. And if that's not gonna work, then I feel like I'm just gonna have to dust my feet and let God judge whoever he needs to judge. And that'll be on your head. Exactly. Alright? And that's all I have to say.
Sundance?
Yeah, so, uh, first thing, I'll just start with a little personal story. I'm twenty years old, I came out here when I was nineteen. I've been here for six and a half months, I built myself a house. I was a, a very proud individual for that accomplishment. Now, I lived in a tent the entire time. You won't be able to do that anymore. Guess I got here in time. But, the, but, the thing that really pissed me off is that I can't have a shed. You wanna let me build a shed now? I can't have a garage, then my car will start in the winter so I can go to work and so that I can buy food at a gas station in your county and give you my tax money. Because my car won't start and I can't get out, my truck won't start, I can't get out. I can't keep my tools safe, can't put it in the shed, I don't wanna put it in my six hundred square foot house. You know how much tools it takes to build that? It's not gonna fit in that, I mean, sure, sure, I could build something, I could make it work, but that's, that's up for you to decide. It really is. Because if I, if I go out there and build that shed, you're gonna find me. I'm not gonna pay the fine, I promise you that. You're gonna keep coming back, you're gonna keep coming back, you're gonna put me in jail because I built a shed to store the tools for the house I built. That's really all, everything else has really been said. The accessory building clause, I just very much don't agree with. If you really wanna do the tent thing, I give... There has to be some sort of compromise here. You have to come to some sort of compromise, I understand. You know, so...
How you them, but don't fix your stuff.
Thank you very much. Last on the list is Daniel.
Um, my name is Daniel, I moved with my wife LaShawn here. Um, we both left our jobs in Las Vegas, she left her job as an officer, I left my job as a teacher, and, and our friend Mike also from Vegas joined us, we trying to start a community. The best way to first get here was, of course, get a RV, which makes it very simplified. We already built our yurt home, we got a TP up, we're almost done with our earth bag home, so as you can see, a trailer or RV is a great way to get everyone going because it's so convenient. We didn't have much money, but enough to get that RV just to get that additional step. And, uh, we're only trying to do great things, and, um, I didn't realize how many other people were even in San Luis Valley, and this is amazing, as you can see, there's something special going on here. This is, every story I hear is, I've never seen this before, I've never seen this going on in the valley, so there's something good going here. So let's let it keep growing. I didn't come here to attack anyone, thank you guys for holding the meeting so we, uh, we all can talk, and just let it grow. Of course, we're, our community promotes what's called a resource-based economy, and I know we're going through some transition right now, so yes, we're gonna have some rules that don't make sense, but I see things getting better and better. And I can, I can deal with the rules right now. Me personally, I don't think we should have anyone come to anyone's land, um, just let people's ideas flourish. There's so many people that have great ideas that make recycling areas and other alternative homes, of course, getting charged with three hundred, four hundred bucks hurts these ideas because we gotta keep spending our own money for city kinda things, but that's fine, just let us keep growing, don't get rid of the RVs and trailers. I have more people who wanna join my community. Of course, again, a convenient way is an RV trailer, they can't just come and sleep on the ground and build their home, they need something to stay in, and you can usually get a good deal online for an RV. I mean, we can't afford a law cabin home right off the back for ten grand, most people can't that I talk to. So, again, there's a beautiful thing going on here, just let it keep growing, and I really have nothing for, love for everybody here, I'm not here to attack anyone, I love everyone here, and I just can't believe how many people showed up to this. There's something great going on, and just let it be.
I just wanna say that if a wrong has not been committed against an individual, you don't have a right. Our rights are based on the fact we have not wronged anybody. If I wrong somebody, come and hit me. If I don't, oops, shit. If I don't, if I don't, you don't have a right.
Victorious drag.
Yeah, no victory equals no crime equals no jurisdiction. I'm gonna go get some towels.
Uh, I'd like to thank you all for coming out today for the public comment part of it. I also wanna thank those veterans that have filled up the... I also wanna thank those veterans that I filled out today, we certainly support your service. Um, and again, uh, this is, um, what it's all about, public comment, we've got it reported, we're gonna take all, everything that everybody said. I want to remind everybody that's here, we are a advisory board to the commissioners. Any recommendations in this land use code that are made, go before the commissioners. They have the final yay or nay for the county. If they're unhappy on some of our recommendations, it comes back to the planning and zoning so that we can further discuss it. We are going to have, as I said, our next meeting is in October. We have things that we're gonna take into consideration, we're gonna go through the land use, use code again, and we're hoping by that time on the, uh, next commissioners meeting, I believe it's their third week in October, that they have our final version of any adjustments that we are making to the land use code, and then they will make the final determination at that time. And again, I thank you all for coming.
I just have one question. We would send an email to Orange, Patchaco, at Costilla County, we would send an email there with our comments?
Uh, until, until, until they're ready for, to hear the information of your recommendations, or that you wanna see, uh, I suggest you send an email to me or something, or I don't need.
Well, the county committee, well, the information that was on the paper I read said that the county commission's information, and if we had any questions or comments, to send it to this, during this, this email, correct?
To, to Orange Patchaco.
Yeah. That's all, I, I was just trying to make sure.
Just, well, 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 just, okay, you're next.
Okay, um, I've had to deal with this with Ben Doon, he is the chief administrative officer of the county commission. I recommend, um, through, I'll send you the link to his email, Chloe. Because you have, you do have it good.
Ben Doon's email, yeah, I've been talking to him for a little bit.
Okay, because, um, he, he kind of like oversees all you, for you. And then the other thing I just wanna make a point of is, I've read a goodly portion of the eighty-nine pages you have on your code thing on the website, right? And most of it kind of, um, it not dictates, but it's kind of like, it's set forth to, uh, make it convenient for you folks living in this little hamlet. It doesn't really apply to us a lot of the codes, you know, and that's what you seem to be wanting to do, is you wanna make it, you know.
No, sir, no, 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 no.
I'm just, I'm just reading for what I'm looking.
I understand, no, what we're trying to do, we're not trying to pick out, it's not our job to pick out a certain community, a certain region within this county, a certain subdivision. Our job is the entire Costilla County, those regulations are meant to be like that. They're not meant to be, oh gee, I live down the street and it's only gonna apply to eight hundred square feet, eight hun- uh, eight hundred yards, no.
But you don't treat us like you treat your town people, we don't have the same amenities as y'all. I mean, what's, what's your response, Tom, after that?
Well, ladies and gentlemen, we-
They're not saying the responsibility from front to back.
Ladies and gentlemen, we, oh, we cannot, the, the board.
How long it'll take you to find the road, though?
Ladies and gentlemen, please, that is not our, that's something you need to take up either with the sheriff's department, the county cap, sir, the county cap, uh, commissioners. We don't deal with that, thank you. That is, that is the next step, that is absolutely what is going to happen.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanna say that, you know, we're here as a community, and I have total respect for you people. I have been going through four years of court because of some of these rules and regulations. I had all my permits, I had all my things, um, I was misled, um, I love, I believe it Sergeant Espinoza, who used to be-
I got promoted like three years ago.
No, he's the undercover sheriff. But, anyway. He, um, was the code enforcement officer when we moved here. In fact, my master Joe Ortiz was the, uh, planning and zoning. And, I'm, I wanna tell you, he, he drew out a thing for me in my building, my battery shed, and because I couldn't get a post office box, no one told me, I couldn't get a post office box without, out having a structure on my property. And it took me four months, I finally had to go to the Denver Postmaster. But all of these people here, if you listen, you know, we didn't have a problem. Andy's a good guy, I think Andy left because there was family-
Kenny, we have already addressed, my, 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 we've already addressed the code enforcement officers that are behind me right now.
Sure, he's a good guy.
And appreciate that, yes ma'am.
I just wanted to say that, um, I, it might be a misunderstanding on my part, but it seems to me that each of the towns have their own codes, and so that means that when you're doing county codes, doesn't that mean you're doing all the, uh, unen- unenfranchised areas? When you're making county codes, it doesn't, unincorporated areas rather than-
Answer that.
Yeah.
So it works the same way that your constitutional rights work? You have a municipal law, a county law, then a state law, federal law. Your municipality, your municipality sets its own rules and regulations for their needs.
So, so what I'm, what I'm trying to say here is that actually, when you say you're doing it for the whole county, you're not. You're just, these laws are for the, um, unincorporated areas of the county.
Correct. Now, it, it supersedes, if you have a problem in a municipality in the town of San Luis, you can use your county laws over the municipal laws, that's the way it's always working throughout time.
Andy, excuse me, one thing to them, there is the county laws, okay? And we all have to abide by them, but, uh, Rio Grande Ranches has their own codes.
Yep, seventy-two.
Sandy Crystal Ranches has their own codes and amendments. Uh, San Luis Valley Ranches Estates has their own codes. Uh, I don't know what the ones are, are out here, there's like thirty different deals, and you can look them up.
Your county and your state will always supersede whatever the government's-
You have to call the county and where you live.
One more.
There's just, also, something was mentioned that wasn't mentioned this evening, afternoon, morning, about unfair enforcement, about those closer to the roads being hit over and over and over and over and over and over and over again. You know, I have friends with property closer to Ute Mountain, it's so much less, I'm not encouraging anyone to be writing tickets out there, I'm saying, they're telling the truth, they're, they're being lazy. They're enforcing the ones that they can see from the road, and they're not even going throughout the whole thing, and that is true. So they're gonna enforce the law, they have to be fair with it, and not just target people that could be seen from one forty-two.
I think they're making the attempt to do that. It's slowly getting better, we have second code enforcement officers. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you, the public session is closed for this.
We did read, they are hiring more officers.
We did, go ahead.
One thing is, winter, winter here is very hard, it's hard to live through. A lot of these laws are being passed and it's going to make it harder to live through. So what happens when the laws, when the laws and all the permits pass, cause someone to lose their life because they couldn't build or do what was necessary for them to live through the winter?
There's a story about, a lot of-
I've been trying to get my physical address for my land for the last three months.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, the public-
It's illegal, the state of Colorado requires me to change over my license within ninety days. I have already violated that state regulation.
Are we done? Is there, is there a statute, it's not a big deal, where you can have a body cam, but I can't record. Why do you have a camera, and I can have a camera? No, I'm asking you a question. Oh, really? Yeah, okay. Oh, dang it, yeah, I don't have a hidden camera. See, I've been like, had to protest in Portland, this is not, this is- Stan, listen to what? Oh, okay, so they're not done yet? Ma'am, ma'am, I've, I've been contacted by people that have been threatened by Tim, I don't know where your question's coming from? Are you, is this just like you guys against us?
No.
I'm not pointing my finger at you.
All right, I'm sorry.
You're an aggressive couple from what I gather.
Go online and read our court case. That will tell you everything you need to know about the lies that have been told.
I haven't.
Has not pointed a gun at anyone, they are allies, and it's in, uh, in the court case.
Alex, we have court papers, and we have pictures. So, they don't know that we have cameras.
I'll write down my notes for you.
Yeah.
I just got a new phone.
Write it on here.
I came out here just three years ago, okay? I, uh, am writing down my email and name. Can I help you? Okay, are, are you like looking at me for a specific reason? Okay, cool, well, that's cool, hope you have a good day. We will, hopefully we can all just at least maybe learn something from this as to how people are really learning out here, because all I've heard is really scary stuff from people. Are you calling? It's not true. Well, people are really scared, but they're not wanting to have a war. They're not, definitely, people actually came here because we're scared of things with other governments, in particular- Alex?
Hey, Alex, nice to meet you. Listen, I don't know what, uh, what the trailers would be telling you, I've pointed a gun at anybody. I've never pointed a gun at anybody in my life.
Okay.
Okay? They made a lot of that stuff up. We did try to get them to comply with the land use code and the D code, but they refused, and they just taken to court. We also tried to trade their property and pay off of their property, we made a very generous offer to relocate them, and they refused. So, don't necessarily believe what you hear.
Okay, that aside, I think, you know, why we're all here with the world, what concerns us in the financial expense that we made to get here?
I get it, I get it, and it's like I said, I don't care that I sit in front of a building trying to get the county to go after people that are out in the neighborhood. My wife and I own our house since two thousand and ten, our house was built in nineteen ninety-seven. There was nobody there when we sold our house. We realized that people would move in, we wanna have neighbors, but you gotta build a house, it has to be smart, it has to be, it has to have a roof. Nobody has built anything, and even the nobles is in there, those three things around you.
Well, one thing I wanna say to you is, there, I've driven around Colorado, I'm from Oregon, as I said, there's some beautiful areas here that people with more money prefer to be. They don't prefer to be in Costilla County where there's hardly any running water. Uh, some people don't wanna be anywhere near marijuana. I will say that things that they have reported in the Denver Post are a little disrespectful because, uh, most people just smoke small amounts of marijuana, they're not really big growers. From what I've heard, San Luis, the town is a big marijuana city, and has been. People used to come, so, I mean, the things that they're saying, so maybe you're telling me you're not the problem? You're not the one that's trying to push forward the no live in your RV, is that what you're saying? I mean, I know that, yeah, it's your opinion that you want that, that way, but you're not the spearhead, is what you're saying about that?
No, in our area, I don't want people living in RVs around us, and there's a reason why.
So you're petitioning for a subdivision, a specific subdivision to be changed?
Yes, yes, because, because our D code is prohibited. They basically say that you cannot live on that property unless you have a residence. They make a very special consideration in the D code is to allow for people to live on their property. It's very clear, if you read that covenant, it's, it's an unusual situation, right? And somebody really asked me why they should be allowed to live. Our problem is really not so much that, it's the beauty of the country, okay? Because people come out and I'm just saying, people have good intentions.
I know there's stuff, I know there's stuff that has been trashed, that's been thrown, but to punish everybody is like, it's medieval. I noticed, I, I know there's people out there that have left trailers. What was not mentioned tonight was a way to affordably get them off those properties. Of course, that would go against codes if we can't live with RVs, but it would be better suited for people to get rid of that stuff and use it anymore. And then the county wouldn't have to come and pick it up, we don't have an organization to do that, what I mean?
That's true, that's true, that's true, some of that stuff could be removed, and I agree with you. I'm gonna say, this is not us saying, go out and get it, you can't, it's not really-
Okay.
Well, I just wanted to introduce myself.
Alright, good to talk to you, maybe we'll see you at another meeting?
We will.
Okay.
Yes, when you, when you get a minute, we'll talk.
Okay. Are we going out this way or this way?